All right, we'd like to.
I've turned on. We'd like to welcome everyone and call to order the regular meeting of the West Valley City Council. This October twenty second, two thousand and twenty four. We're beginning our meeting at six thirty P M in the council chambers of West Valley City Hall. All members of the council are present. We have Councilman Fitziamanu, Councilman Whitstone, Councilman Harmon, Councilman Hune, myself, Councilman Christensen, and Councilman Norfelt. We're also joined at the dais with our city manager, Mr. Peely, and our city recorder, Ms. Kamic. Our opening ceremony will be given to us by Councilman Christensen this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I looked at the calendar today, and there are two weeks left until the general election. In that two weeks, you can vote. Starting Monday, early walk-in voting will be here in the lobby. Between now and then, you can take that ballot that you've already received, fill it out, put it in the reception ballot box out on the park strip. But vote. We need the, we need to get out the vote. You know, many people think, well, shucks. My candidate's not going to win anyway, so why should I vote? Your candidate will never win if you don't vote for him. So please, get out and vote. I'm probably talking to all those who have already sent their ballots in. But please get out and do it. You've got two weeks left, and then on the fifth, it'll be open out here, so you can come in and vote all day if you want. Or at least once all day. Okay? We're not Chicago yet. So please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor.
Hey, thank you. All right, we will now take our minutes of October eighth, two thousand and twenty four. Turn that to the council for discussion or a motion.
Hey, Mayor, I had moved to approve those minutes.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And those stand approved. We will now go to our awards ceremonies and proclamations. This evening, we're going to recognize our city recorder, Ms. Kamic. And we have some representatives from the Utah Municipal Clerks Association here to present Nicole with her Master Municipal Clerk designation, and I'll turn the time over to them.
Uh, Mayor and Council, thank you for your time and opportunity to recognize Nicole tonight. Um, I am Alicia Fairborn. I am the city recorder for Hideout and the secretary on the U M C A board.
I'm Kim Crane. I'm the Springville City Recorder, and I'm the Vice President of the U M C A.
I'm Lucinda Thomas. I am a city clerk in Genoa, and I'm Associate Director on U M C A.
So we represent the Utah Municipal Clerks Association and our partnership with the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. And the mission of the organization is to provide our members with educational networking support and to promote positive professional interaction with elected officials, staff, and the general public, and to enhance the awareness and value of the municipal clerk and recorder positions and professions. Our international organization offers two certification programs. The programs are administered locally here in Utah by the municipal, uh, Utah Municipal Clerks Association. And we have developed an amazing partnership with Southern Utah University to provide the educational opportunities for these programs. As you may know, Nicole has already completed the requirements for, for the Certified Municipal Clerk or C M C designation, which requires completion of university-level coursework earning a minimum of sixty educational points and fifty points related to work experience. One point is received for every two hours of class time, so sixty points reflects a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty hours of class time. But tonight, uh, Nicole has fulfilled the requirements to obtain the Master Municipal Clerk's designation, or M M C, which is an advanced continuing education program that prepares clerks and recorders to perform more complex municipal duties. This program has an extensive and rigorous educational component of sixty advanced educational points of university-level training, which require a hundred and twenty hours of class time. Additionally, a social contribution of forty points is required as well. As you can imagine, it takes many years to attain this certification. We are very fortunate that the West Valley City Mayor, the City Council, and the city manager recognize improving their employees' skills and knowledge through continuing education and professional development opportunities. We salute you and your city for your forward thinking. It is our privilege to honor Nicole tonight with this award, recognizing her professional accomplishments.
Do you mind if we get a couple of pictures with the council and?
Yep, we'll have. Did you want to say anything first, Nicole?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
She's like, no.
Just thanks to the U M C A for all of your support and also to the mayor and council and staff. I love what I do and I appreciate working with each of you.
Thank you. Do you want to hold it? Okay.
I can use mine and we can use yours. Okay. I'll take very good pictures for you. That's fantastic. One, two, and
You got the whole council.
I got everybody.
Thank you so much.
All right. We will next have a proclamation read by Councilman Norfelt declaring November first, two thousand and twenty four as Extra Mile Day.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas West Valley City is a community which acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists with the entire community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service. And whereas West Valley City is a community which encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community. And whereas West Valley City is a community which chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community. And whereas West Valley City acknowledges the mission of the Extra Mile America to create five hundred and fifty Extra Mile Cities in America and is proud to support Extra Mile Day on November first, two thousand and twenty four. Now, therefore, we, the mayor and city council of West Valley City, do hereby proclaim November first, two thousand and twenty four to be Extra Mile Day. We urge each individual in the community to take time on this day to not only go the extra mile in his or her own life, but to also acknowledge all those around who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organizations, families, community, country, or world a better place.
Thank you. And we would like to invite, invite Sierra Cummings, a volunteer at our animal shelter, to come to the podium and say a few words. And then we'll have you come through and shake everybody's hands, and we'll have photos.
Um, hello, my name is Sierra Cummins. I'm an I T project manager, and I currently live in West Valley City. Uh, for the last several months, I've been volunteering at the West Valley Animal Shelter, and I came here today to uh, share why I got involved in volunteering, how I got involved, and some of the work that I've been doing. Uh, I have been passionate about animal welfare from a young age, and several months ago, I was able to participate in a Best Friends National Conference. During this conference, I was shown a variety of data-backed methods that can be used to help animals within the shelter find new families and homes. I also was shown examples of how local initiatives and involvement can help animals as well as the community from various other animal services or animal control officers from various states. And so when I got back home, I went to the West Valley Animal Shelter to see what I could do to help out, help out of my, you know, home play, home area. Uh, the shelter welcomed me with open arms, and I began professionally grooming cats and dogs as well as doing, uh, designing captivating pet profiles in my spare time. These profiles help ease people into adoption so that they can learn more about the animal beforehand. And as a result, people are happier with their informed choices, since they get to learn a lot about the nuances with the individual pet. They also, the shelter also partners with other rescues and organizations to offer community services, such as vaccinations for pets, microchipping, and being able to waive adoption fees. I want to share and encourage anyone interested in local volunteer work to reach out to the West Valley Animal Shelter. Every volunteer matters, and there's plenty of engaging ways to help out from cleaning kennels or just being able to foster any of the animals we have at our shelter. Uh, thank you for listening, and I hope my experience encourages more community involvement in ensuring the welfare of the animals in our city and shines a light on the important services that the shelter provides to the community.
Thank you. Okay, if you want to come up and we'll, everyone sign your, or shake everyone's hand on the podium, just here in front.
You can come down.
Ma'am, just right here in front. Yep. No, you're good.
Okay, one, two, three.
Thank you for all you do. All right. We will now accept public comment. Public comment is limited to thirty minutes. Any person wishing to comment shall limit their comments to three minutes. Upon recognition by the mayor, you will approach the microphone. If you did not have a chance to sign up, please give us your name and address, otherwise just your name. All comments shall be directed to the mayor. No person addressing the council during the comment period shall be allowed to comment more than once. Comments shall be limited to city business and matters within the purview of city council. Speakers shall not expect any debate with the council, mayor, or city staff. The mayor, council, and staff may respond after the comment period has concluded. Speaker, speakers shall refrain from personal attacks against fellow citizens, city staff, and members of the council. So nobody signed up to be one and two, so we'll start with speaker three.
Hey, Mike Markham. My primary reason for coming tonight is I would like to apologize to anybody that was, uh, inflicted with the communications in the parking lot two weeks ago. Um, I feel like it was very childish and very, uh, unprofessional, and if you were inflicted on that, uh, I apologize. Also, I talked to the lady that lives next door to the catwalk that we've talked about, and she wasn't even aware of the one where we had about fifty kids out. She doesn't see that it's a big problem. So, you know, I don't know that that needs to be pursued at all anymore. Um, so there was literally no problems there. But like I said, I just wanted to apologize to, for, uh, what happened and whoever was caught in the middle of it. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Speaker four. Yeah, I think you're speaker five.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Jim Vissok. Um, once, I want to thank Nicole also. Her, her job, like they said, was council, staff. And as a citizen, she has been very helpful in the early days, and we used to have to fill out grandma request forms. She taught me how to do that. When we went online, and she also taught me that you have to be very detailed. But then also in the campaign, um, she, if I ever had a question or any person running, you could call her and she'd get back to you. If I have a question about other things in the city, I can leave her a message. And usually, unless it's on a Thursday, it might take them Monday coming back, but usually right away, she gets back with an email, her commenting. So that, from the citizen's point of view, she, great job. Um, Fall Festival, we had it Saturday. Will was there. It'd been good to see more of you guys there. It was out at the Roots Farm. If you've never been out there, this is a school, and, um, they do agriculture, they do planting. It's kind of a really cool place to go. And so we partnered with them. We had our yard award winners out there for Clean and Beautiful. Once again, promoting the beautification of West Valley City, and we had a large turnout of them, and so it went very, very well. I was going to bring up the the agenda. Once again, it's done on three papers. I was, I was joking about it. I've been asking for a paper budget. Well, maybe if they started printing that on both sides, there'd be enough extra paper where I could get that paper budget. Ending, ending with the joke. That's all I have tonight. How are we doing?
Hey, thank you, Speaker Five.
Um, my, my grievance is with, um, the business of, uh, Adam and Eve. And I don't live very far from there, and it's close to a high school. It's close to a junior high. Um, I live next door to a daycare. Um, every time I go past there, um, they have changed the clothes on the mannequins, and they are getting very racy. It's, it's so embarrassing to go past there. Uh, I just, uh, I'm just totally disgusted. And, um, I might have to go a different way, um, to where I need to walk to. Um, I just, I just can't believe that we have some business like that in our city, close to schools and by homes. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker Six.
Good evening, Nicole. Congratulations. Well deserved. My name's Kelly Bertosch. I live thirty-seven eighty-one South, six thousand West Hunter, Utah. Yeah, I see their looks. Uh, I'm glad that you brought up about elections, because I got reminded years ago when this city first become a city. And I was bellyaching, and one of my coworkers who towered over me, looked at me and said, did you vote? And I said, no. And he said, then shut your blanking mouth. He taught me a lesson. I voted every since. So I have the right to bitch. And then those people who don't want to vote, then shut your mouths. That's the way I feel about it. Uh, I learned a good value lesson about it. But since I do have the opportunity to vote and to voice my opinions, uh, I don't have much of an opinion of the city. Uh, that's why I say Hunter. You guys have ruined my community by becoming the city that tyrants that you have become. And I know you can sit back and say you don't take bribes, you don't take perks. I'm going to say B S to that, because I worked in the government for thirty years, and I know everybody in the upper elite takes something. And that's each one of every one of you guys that were sitting there looking at me. I know that you get something out of it. Now, you guys got to remember one thing. You work for us, we the people. We the people make the rules. You guys are supposed to follow that. Unfortunately, our government has forgotten who they work for. And I hope, coming up soon, that we go red or we will be dead. That was something that I just learned just recently, and you know what? I firmly believe it. What's going on in our city, in our state, and in our world, in the United States, is falling into hell. And it's because folks that saying how to do this, that really don't deserve to be in a seat or in a position. Every one of you guys have sat here and listened to many people complaining about high-density housing, all this development. And, uh, you know, I had three people come up to me after the Redwood Drive-In. One was your, uh, sergeant. I've not yet heard one word back from anybody who said, what's really going on? See, you guys are clueless to what's even going on. I want to know why there's being development next to me and the three lots to my north.
Hey, thank you. Speaker Seven.
Mayor and Council, thank you for listening to me. I'm Steve Taylor. I live on Meadowbree Way, and my back lot backs up to a lot that faces Thirty-Fifth South. In that lot this evening are twenty-four mobile homes, trucks, and trailers. I called about this about three months ago, and it was confirmed that it was a residential lot, and that type of parking was not valid. And the parking enforcement would enforce and see to that they were cleared out to be patient for two weeks. I was patient two weeks, and they all cleared out. But about a month ago, they have filled back up with multiple homes, cars, trucks, trailers. Currently today, there's twenty-four in that lot. I have pictures. I don't know if I can leave that with the clerk.
Thank you.
But I would like to see something happen on that. I moved to the West Valley here. I chose a lot that didn't have commercial in it. And now I'm attached to a lot that is very definitely commercial. Nobody owns those twenty-four trailers. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone online that wish to speak? And is there anyone in the audience that wish to speak that did not have a chance? Okay, please come to the mic and give us your name and address, please.
Hello, my name is Peter Byerly. Uh, I live at forty-two fifteen South, four thousand West. Um, I'm a tow truck driver. I am having a hard time having a place to park my truck. I know, I know it's a commercial vehicle. Um, and it is a bigger tow truck. It's not a semi tow truck. It is, it's a semi, but it doesn't haul semis. Um, there's a spot across the street where I've been parking for the past two years and really haven't had any issues, except I got ticketed once or twice in that spot and multiple times in my, in front of my house on the, uh, parking strip. And I know I'm not supposed to park there. It's just where I park so I can be close to my truck. Um, I'm looking for some leniency or some type of parking pass or some type of, uh, assigned place where I can park, where I can know my truck's not going to get broken into, or my stuff's not going to get stolen off of my truck, chains and whatnot, straps and stuff. Um, I had a mishap at Kinko's FedEx, so I have a, one picture here really of, uh, my area. And I just want to know where I can park, where I can get to my police calls on time and do my job. That's it.
Thank you. All right, was there anyone else that wished to speak that had not signed up?
Speak again.
Yep. You have not spoken in public comment. So name an address.
Uh, Si- Sierra Cummins, and my address is four eight one four West Colton Mill Court. Um, there's a school that, uh, lives very close to me called Mon- Monachello Academy, I believe. And it is a lovely school, uh, but the, when parents come to pick up their kids, um, sometimes parents will park in the roundabout that's really close by, like they'll actually block a lane of traffic. And I do kind of get why they do that. There's no safe spot other than the roundabouts, even then sometimes, for their kids to cross the street. And there is a parking lot across the street, but there is no, like, actual walkway that's, you know, monitored or anything. It's either you have to walk all the way down to a, um, traffic light, or you have to try to cross the roundabout. And so I, I, I think it would be nice, I don't know if this is the right place for this, but I think it would be nice if we could see if there's a way we could install a crosswalk maybe in front of the school. So that way then that parking lot that I believe is like a corporation parking lot could at least be temporarily used for when, uh, parents are trying to pick up their kids. Uh, so that way they're not parking in the roundabouts and causing issues for people trying to go that way back to their homes. And hopefully it be safe around the kids, so that way they'll feel more comfortable, you know, crossing the street if they need to, to reach their parents on the, uh, other side of the road. Um, but that, that was all. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, again, anyone else that wish to speak? Okay, seeing no one else, we'll close the public comment. And we will proceed to application G P Z five, twenty twenty-four. This application would change the general plan from large lot residential to small lot residential and change the zone from agriculture to R one eight. The application, the applicant is proposing to demolish existing homes and duplexes and build a planned unit development consisting of forty-one units with close to one acre of open space. So okay, so, um, we will now open the public hearing and ask anyone that had comments to this issue to come to the mic.
Again, Kelly Bertosch. Uh, I'm curious to medium-sized houses, small homes. How small of a home are you guys planning on putting in there? Uh, we don't need any more high-density stuff. And you know what? If, you guys are going to ruin some agriculture there. There's two buck deers running. There's two buck deers running in and out of there all the time. So you better have wildlife involved in this too, because you'll have to remove these animals. I have no problem with you tearing down Cooperville. We, and there's a couple of people here that we actually had to hire an attorney to sue you guys at one time before you would do anything about Cooperville. Because there was raw sewage and everything else running underneath there and all kinds of crime. It wasn't until we hired an attorney before you guys made an assumption and said, okay, we're going to condemn it. So I could care less if it's gone. Yes, I was born and raised there, I know Les Cooper, I knew his wife, I knew everything about that area. I was born and raised just down the street. I'd like to see something good go in there. But I don't want to see cheap cracker box houses. And I don't want to see a rat infested what's there now be spread out through my community. And there's going to be a big problem there. I hope you guys understand that. Because there's years and years of neglect on those homes. I hope that you guys would send some good inspectors in there foresight for health or purpose reasons. But again, I do not like high density housing. I question a lot of the stuff that goes on around there and you know that, I do every meeting. I think that's the best thing we can do, put our two cents in if we live there, we need to be able to access and be able to express our opinions, whether you like them or not. You know, it's the way it is. But I would like to see some changes go in at Cooperville. I really would. And I'm sure there's other people here that will testify that. We do want some changes out there for the best interest of us. Not just for the city, in best interest for us as a community. It has always been in the last twenty something years, an eyesore. A little paint only covers the outside. If you know what's going on on the inside, you can kind of tell. So I hope you guys make good wise choices. I hope that you study this and look into it. As well as all the other plans that you guys have for the other subdivision or fields that are next to me. I know your master plan is showing them all residential. I hope that you guys really consider twice what you're putting in some of these places and understand the infrastructure right there is not as strong as it once was. That subdivision that I'm attached to is the Bailey Hancock subdivision. And they added on to it. When they built that road going back out by the bottom pipe by that church there closer to Thirty-Fifth. We don't have the water pressure. Like I've told you before, when I first moved there, I could pour sprinkler heads, I could draw water clear out to the center of my yard or the, the street. I can't even water my lawn without keep adding more and more heads to it and adding valves. That's not fair for people who've lived there for this, their lifetime. So I hope that you look in this as a big venture, both power, water, sewer, where are you going to tie into? This stuff is all forty plus years old. Forty-six years, forty-seven years old, so. I don't know what the lines are like going down six thousand, I know they've never been replaced. So, and I know your easement is covered up by a ditch and sidewalks, so you're really eliminating where and how you can go without trespassing into people's yards. I learned that when you brought in Utopia. And obviously some of your city employees went to work for Utopia, you know, talk about double interest, you know? Inside trading or whatever, I don't know, but again, it points the fingers right back at City Hall. So I hope that you consider all this stuff and realize we as a community are strong out in that area. And I hope that you will take into that as a consideration.
Hey, thank you. Anyone else wish to address? Name and address, please.
Beth Boyer, sixty forty-five West, thirty-seven eighty-five South. I'm here to talk about the same property he's talking about Cooperville, as we've referred to it for years. I'm quite excited you're ripping it. It's been forty-six years that I've waited, I thought I'd be dead before they decided to rip that stuff down. It is the worst. I had a meeting with the mayor Brent Anderson back in nineteen eighty-seven, who came to my backyard, had a meeting, I won't repeat what he told me. But we took the figures of how many people, police department, fire department was called to those homes in one year period. And we couldn't even have a party in our backyard for the kids. Because the kids would sit and throw garbage down into your yard, try to hit the cakes, oh yeah. It's, I ducked in my bedroom from the SWAT teams. It's been a nightmare, so I'm excited. However, I'm trying to understand where you guys are going because I know there's six point six acres. And you're saying forty-one houses. My property is eight thousand square feet. So if we're sticking with eight thousand square feet, I'm good. But I don't want any dense housing back there. We've had it with the rentals, we've had it with what it brings. I'm all good with single family homes. And so when you gave me the card, that's what it basically said is eight thousand square feet. But I don't know where you're getting forty-one houses. So I hope that's what it is. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak to this issue?
Good evening, City Council, thanks for your time. My name's Kyle Kershaw. And I live on three zero zero six east, twenty-nine sixty-five south. And I represent the family that owns that, those parcels out there. First of all, I want to, I want to thank your planning staff, they've been wonderful to work with during this process. I haven't had many meetings with them like the developer has, but they've been very helpful and accommodating. We appreciate their time and effort. My, these properties have been owned by my wife's family for about forty years. And during that time, there have been issues as these citizens have mentioned, but for the past twenty or some odd years since we've been involved, me personally, they've been under professional management. We have property managers that inspect and hopefully those problems have been reduced greatly in the last several years. It's just, and, and to that point, we've always appreciated and we've always enjoyed working with West Valley City on various issues that have come up, be it code enforcement or public utilities or public works issues. We've always had a good relationship with West Valley City and we appreciate that relationship. We as a family, when it was, when we decided that we should probably look at letting somebody else utilize this property and take it to a big, a better and higher use. We knew the properties are dated, they are tired looking. And we as a family just don't have the means to bring them up to a standard. But I think that the community in the neighborhood would appreciate, that's why we sought out a partnership and we think the people with Grow have really put together a nice plan to improve those properties and to be a benefit to the community. So we would just ask you to consider all that's gone into this and to support these petitions that are in front of you. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? And no one online? Okay, thank you. We will now close the public hearing and I'll turn the, well, for a really quick synopsis, would Mr. Pastrick come up and just really quickly summarize the lots, the size of the homes?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So the, the proposal has forty-one lots. It would be what we call a planned unit development or PUD, which does allow for lots to be smaller than the zoning in exchange for having some open space. And so as we discussed, there's roughly an acre of open space. The lots are as small as about forty-five ish hundred square feet. Where the, most of the lots are about fifty feet wide. There are some that are forty-five. The home size that's proposed, the minimum in the development agreement is two thousand two hundred and fifty square feet. They would all be two-story homes that are proposed. And I think that hits the high points, but are there other specific questions there?
They will have basements, correct?
Correct, I believe we had that in the agreement here.
Yeah, so they finished off, could be a lot larger than just the twenty-two hundred?
Right, that's, the twenty-two hundred is the finished base above grade.
Okay.
And yes, so it is, it is an agreement that they would have a basement.
Okay, thank you. I think that answers a few of the questions.
Thank you.
All right, I'll now turn this matter over to the council for discussion or a motion.
Mayor, I would motion to, to continue this until our next meeting to allow the applicant to address some of the concerns we had in the last study meeting.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments before we take a vote? Okay, seeing none, turn it over to Ms. Kimmick.
Councilman Fatisa Manu?
Aye.
Councilman Whitstone?
Yes.
Councilman Harmon?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Ling?
Yes.
Motion for continuance passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. So we'll revisit this, there wasn't a date specific. So watch your notices and there will be no public hearing on the next meeting.
I think the, saying the next meeting is clear and that would be November twelfth.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll now go to our resolutions. We'll begin with resolution twenty-four dash one forty-six. This resolution will authorize the police department to dispose of firearms to a federally licensed dealer and receive credit towards purchase, the purchase of ammunition. Utah code allows this, but requires the city council to approve and designate the ammunition as a public interest use. Turn this issue to the council for discussion or a motion.
Motion to approve resolution twenty-four dash one forty-six. Second.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second, Ms. Kimmick.
Councilman Fatisa Manu?
Aye.
Councilman Whitstone?
Yes.
Councilman Harmon?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Ling?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We'll now go to resolution twenty-four dash one forty-seven. This resolution would extend an interlocal agreement with Salt Lake County to provide off-duty police present at West Valley Library Branch. To the council for discussion or a motion?
Motion to approve resolution twenty-four dash one forty-seven.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second, Ms. Kimmick.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Yes.
Councilman Harmon?
Yes.
Councilman Whitstone?
Yes.
Councilman Fatisa Manu?
Aye.
And Mayor Ling?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We'll now move to resolution twenty-four dash one forty-eight. This resolution would allow for the replacement of the roof membrane at the Utah Cultural Celebration Center. The total cost is two hundred eighty-one thousand dollars and includes a twenty-year no-dollar limit warranty. To the council for discussion or a motion?
I move for approval of resolution twenty-four dash one forty-eight.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Ms. Kimmick.
Councilman Fatisa Manu?
Aye.
Councilman Whitstone?
Yes.
Councilman Harmon?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Ling?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We'll now have resolution twenty-four dash one forty-nine. This resolution will allow for the construction of a garage to house the graffiti vehicle and equipment. The total cost is forty-five thousand dollars. To the council for discussion or a motion?
Motion to approve resolution twenty-four dash one forty-nine.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, Ms. Kimmick.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Yes.
Councilman Harmon?
Yes.
Councilman Whitstone?
Yes.
Councilman Fatisa Manu?
Aye.
And Mayor Ling?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, we now have a resolution twenty-four dash one fifty. This resolution would authorize the purchase of eighteen vehicles from Kengar Ford and Tony DeVino Toyota for eight hundred, two thousand dollars, eight hundred and two. No, let's start that over. Eight hundred and two thousand dollars. No, hundred thousand dollars and eight oh two thousand dollars. Sorry about that one. To the council for discussion or a motion?
I move to approve resolution twenty-four dash one fifty.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second, Ms. Kimmick.
Councilman Fatisa Manu?
Aye.
Councilman Whitstone?
Yes.
Councilman Harmon?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Ling?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Resolution twenty-four dash one fifty-one. This resolution would authorize the purchase of two trucks from Kengar Ford to be used by Public Works Street Operations and Stormwater Maintenance. The total cost is one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. To the council for discussion or a motion?
Move for approval, resolution twenty-four dash one five one.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second, Ms. Kimmick.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Yes.
Councilman Harmon?
Yes.
Councilman Whitstone?
Yes.
Councilman Fatisa Manu?
Aye.
And Mayor Ling?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We'll now move to resolution twenty-four dash one fifty-two. This resolution would authorize the purchase of a new street sweeper for a total of three hundred eighty-six thousand, six seventy-six. The appropriate, or the anticipated delivery date is eighteen months. To the council for discussion or a motion?
Do you have a question maybe? Does Public Works know what the the value is when we go to sell them after two years? What do we, what's our surplus value on those?
If we were to trade it in now, I don't remember the numbers, but it would, you, we'd get just under two hundred thousand dollars roughly. As I recall, but we didn't price that out this time because of the, of the long lead time. So when the time comes to dispose of it, we will either trade it into the dealer or we'll sell it at auction or find some way to maximize the, the value that we get out of that piece of equipment.
If we don't take that into consideration, is, I think the math is right, ours will help me, but I think it's about sixteen thousand dollars per rounder around the city, so it's, I'd like to extend that another year or two and get some more money out of that. But then maybe we need to figure out how much, if we can still get two hundred thousand for the sweeper, but I'd like to see if we can extend the time we own it, get more use out of it.
Sure, I understand that. We can certainly explore that in our, in our strategic plan. We, up until recently, this, in fact, this very sweeper purchase, we were purchasing a sweeper every single year. And, and so the, the life of a sweeper was four years and we've extended that now to eight for the, the oldest sweeper when we traded him in.
So we are keeping it for eight years?
Yes, so we have four sweepers and we replace one every other year.
Two years, yes. All right, that makes more sense. I was thinking we were selling them after two years and
No.
But
No.
That was hard for me to
We sell the oldest back for two years, yeah.
All right.
Sorry for the confusion.
Then, thank you, I'll offer a motion to approve resolution twenty-four dash one fifty-two.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second, Ms. Kimmick.
Councilman Fatisa Manu?
Aye.
Councilman Whitstone?
Yes.
Councilman Harmon?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Ling?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We'll now take resolution twenty-four dash one fifty-three. This resolution would authorize the purchase and upfitting of a ten-wheeler dump truck to be used for snow removal and road maintenance work. The total cost is three hundred and forty thousand dollars. To the council for discussion or a motion?
Motion to approve twenty-four dash one five three.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second, Ms. Kimmick.
Councilman Nordfeld.
Yes.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Hune.
Yes.
Councilman Harmon.
Yes.
Councilman Whitstone.
Yes.
Councilman Fatisa Manu.
Yes.
And Mayor Ling.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. We don't have a need for a closed session, so we have one more action item.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And we stand adjourned. Thank you so much, we'll see you in two weeks, maybe three, three weeks.
Three weeks.
Three.